The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Varmer. Alderman Martin. Did she say here? Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohen. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Varmer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Williamson. Twenty present.
Quorum being present. I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries to, if you're able to stand, to please rise for prayer. Before we begin today's meeting and begin our prayer, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for the death of Frankie Muse Freeman, who is not just a civil rights activist, but a true humanitarian in St. Louis City, was just indeed blessed to have her be with us for all the years she was with us. The neighborhood I currently live in, I could not have lived in had it not been for Frankie Freeman. So, please join me in a moment of silence. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We will suspend what our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions Alderman from the, Alderman from 22nd, you recognize on the motion for our courtesy resolution calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 18th and 21st.
Good morning, Members of the Board, our distinguished guests that are present. This morning, we're going to be honoring Ms. Jessica Bueller and Welcome Neighbor St. Louis, the organization that she's with that's been doing phenomenal work in the West End Neighborhood, which is part of the 22nd Ward over there near where the whole amount of apartments are. Ms. Bueller and her organization has been doing a phenomenal job with the Syrian refugees and making sure they have a very good support system, getting acclimated more to the United States and the environment that they're currently living in, and we just wanted to take a moment to recognize them. And I'll read the resolution that talks about all the great works that she's doing and her organization. Whereas the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen recognizes Jessica Bueller for her dedication to immigrants and refugees looking to start a new life in St. Louis. And whereas, we commend Jessica for her continuous hard work in creation of Welcome Neighbor St. Louis, a community group supporting immigrants and refugees as they begin a new life in St. Louis. The group offers emotional and social support primarily for partners volunteering with new families. And whereas Welcome Neighbor St. Louis was formed after a simple post on Nextdoor.com asking for her neighbors to support a few Syrian refugee families with toiletry item donations during the holiday season. Jessica was overwhelmed with the amount of support and items she received for the families, and whereas Jessica knew that for the first three months of their time in the United States, the families were being supported by the International Institute. However, the support from the organization would come to an end, that there was an inedible need for people in the community to step up and create ongoing support system for the families. And whereas today, Welcome Neighbor STL has nearly 500 volunteers working together to support immigrants and refugees in the city of St. Louis. Welcome Neighbor STL has raised more than $15,000 for families and offers weekly super club events to help raise funds for families present and present an opportunity for them to share knowledge and skills to help refugees gain greater independence and confidence in their new lives. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we recognize Jessica Bueller and Welcome Neighbor STL and commit to supporting her efforts in helping and welcoming immigrants and refugees to St. Louis. And we direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a timing placed deemed appropriate by the sponsor introduced this day by President Louis Reed and myself, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Jessica Bueller.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from 28th.
I just also want to say how grateful I am for the work of Jessica Bueller, and I would like to take this opportunity to ask that my name be added as a co-sponsor on this resolution this morning.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman from 14th.
Yes, I would like to congratulate Jessica and hope that she continues her work. As someone that represents a ward of many diverse cultures and immigrants, I appreciate her work, and I would like to have my name added to it also.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Alderman from the 12th.
President, Members of the Board. I will. Jessica, thank you for everything you've done. We all appreciate it. And, Mr. President, I'd like to take the opportunity, if possible, to ask that this resolution be in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 12th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another copy of the resolution and bank.
So noted.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Jessica, I also just want to tell you, thank you for all the work that you've done, and also to your husband, the work that you've done just in your short time on Nextdoor just shows what can be done, you know, to change people's lives, especially under this current president that we have in the White House. We need some serious help on a local, on a local level, and you've done it. So I just want to, on behalf of my family and friends and other people throughout the city who aren't able to be here today, to thank you and congratulate you, I want to thank you and congratulate you for that. And I want to also thank Alderman from the 22nd, in which ward you worked in, for everything that he's done and also helping to get this resolution done for you today. This resolution is highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual, but what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point in time. So 100, 200 years from now, when you read the records of the City of St. Louis and you read about how we worked to help to make sure that people had equal rights and that people had an opportunity for refuge here in our city under President Trump, they will read about Jessica Bueller and the changes that you made and made a difference. Over 500 volunteers, let's give her one more big round of applause.
Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, I would like to ask Ms. Bueller, would she come and have a few words?
Thank you very much to the City of St. Louis for this great honor and for recognizing the achievement, achievements of our efforts and of our organization, Welcome Neighbor STL. With what started out as a single toiletry drive, our business in the Delmar Loop has blossomed into something bigger than we ever could have imagined. Welcome Neighbor STL is a group of committed community volunteers with now over 700 members. These are people from all over our great city who take time out of their busy schedules to help the most vulnerable families in need during their transitional stages of relocating to the City of St. Louis. The refugee crisis is one of the most urgent humanitarian issues the world has ever faced. 2016 in particular was one of the toughest years on record for displaced people. Not since World War II have we seen so many people forced to flee their own countries, and yet prejudice and indifference against refugees continues to grow. With more than 65 million people displaced worldwide, it is our responsibility as human beings to open our arms and welcome refugees who are being brutalized in their own countries and to let them know, you are welcome here. When my great-grandfather first immigrated to New York in 1923, he had a dream of becoming a doctor. But as an African-American man who came to the United States with his young bride, a young Hispanic woman, the United States had no interest in allowing my great-grandfather to study medicine at any university. My great-grandfather left his family behind in New York in 1928 and moved to Canada alone. It was for the first time that he was accepted into a university where he could pursue his dream of studying medicine. After five grueling years of being separated from his family, Alfred E. Waddell graduated in 1933, becoming one of the first Black physicians in North America. It was at this time he was finally able to reunite with his family. Despite his own hardships, my great-grandfather spent the rest of his life treating many isolated people who had no access to medical care. He brought medicine to far-flung Black communities, Asian communities, the elderly, the poor, and the most vulnerable. A champion of social equality, Dr. Waddell raised his children with the ideas of fairness and earned the respect of an entire city. Although he died of a heart attack before he could see many of the social changes he fought for, Alfred Waddell is remembered fondly by those who benefited from his advocacy. Although this story has long been forgotten by most, and 80 years have passed, the work, the courage, and the dedication shown by my great-grandfather has been passed down generation to generation. And the spirit of helping others, especially who are the most vulnerable and in need, has never been forgotten, which is why I would like to dedicate this award and this proclamation to my great-grandfather, Alfred E. Waddell. If there's one thing I've learned in my family, it is that when you become successful, you have the responsibility to leave the latter down, meaning that when you become successful, you leave the ladder of opportunity down so that others can follow behind you. You don't stand at the top of the mountain and say, "Look at me, look what I've done, look what I've accomplished." Instead, you leave the ladder down so that you can bring up as many people to follow behind you. This is our goal with Welcome Neighbor STL. We extend a helping hand to help others in need in the same way we would want others to help us. But this idea doesn't only have to involve refugees. If you see a park in your community that needs some tender loving care, or a school that needs help with maintenance, or maybe an elderly neighbor living in your subdivision who needs help with their yard, or even just someone to talk to, these are all problems that we can solve together. By using technology available in our communities such as Nextdoor, we can put our heads together to make a real difference and to create positive change in our communities. So the next time that you see something in your community that needs a little TLC, just remember, you don't need an invitation to do the right thing. Thank you.
Jessica, let me just say, that was awesome. That was awesome. Let's give her one more big round of applause. Congratulations. Also, let's give her husband Ryan a big round of applause too, and thanks both of them for coming up. Alderman, Alderman from the 1st.
President, couple of things. First of all, I don't have Board Bill 203 on my desk, and I've asked several of my colleagues, so.
Sergeant of Arms around, have the Sergeant on Arms, I get it, and the Attorney. Could you please make sure that Board Bill 203 is on everyone's desk? Thank you, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. And also, I have some special guests. Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, what did you say? No, we're working on, one more thing, we're still on courtesy resolution calendar.
Okay.
I thought you were going to handle the thing. Alderman from the 4th, you have embanked motion for a courtesy resolution that you wanted to give.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that we embank Resolution Number 204.
For Frankie Freeman. Resolution 204 is the resolution for Frankie Muse Freeman. It's been moved by Alderman from the 4th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd and 26th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Resolution 204 was in bank.
So noted.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I have a very special group of honored guests here with me. There is a neighborhood, and I'm going to get this wrong, neighborhood leadership program that just started, and it's through the Promise Zone, and actually, I recommended several people who are in the leadership program. And I have with us, we all know Joanne Williamson's worked with us for the 21st Ward, we have Justin Idleberg.
Aye.
We have, okay, here, wait a minute, I got to say these names right, my phone turns off. I had them text me because I, okay, we have Arneisa Blackman.
Aye.
Ronald Jones.
Aye.
And Umeeme Houston.
Aye.
And it's, the program is for nine months, and they meet once a weekend, twice during the, yeah, twice, like a Saturday and a Sunday, or Friday and a Saturday, and they are studying how to better our city, and they're going to be some of the new future leaders that maybe we will see down here in the near future.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Alderman from 13th.
Members of the Board, I would like to have as my honored guests from the Carpenter's Regional Council, I have Shannon Weber, Kevin Hayes, Keith Taylor, and Jeff Hans, and just as a little aside, Jeff Hans' son just received the Eagle Scout Award.
Oh, man.
So, I'm sure we call that out.
That's a big deal.
And I also have a constituent in the balcony up there, Lou Who. Thank you.
All right, welcome. Alderman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to introduce my honored guest, Ms. Katina Shannon with Ameren, and then I need to not forget my friend, Fred Cersey with the Union.
Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I have no voice. I'd like to introduce as my special guests, Sinead Magnus and David Sweeney from Lewis Rice. Thank you.
All the women from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President, and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my special guest, Ms. Joanne Williams, Mr. James Sonderman from the Water Department, Nathan Lutt from Local 73, and Clinton McBride from Laborers Union.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to have my esteemed guest this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T and Leroy Graham.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions, any further? Alderman from the 16th.
Members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Anthony Lancia from the AGC.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Jerome from the License Collector's Office, and also my very special guest today is Ms. Lisa McNichols.
Any further introductions, any further inductions? We will, we're going to dispense with line item 5, report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item 7, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items 8 through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Number 239, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Planet Commission on January the 11th, 2018, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map and in City Block 2485 from G Local Commercial and Office District to the B Two-Family Dwelling District at 4231 through 41 North Grand and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 240, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Oldenburg, and ordinance providing for and directing the submission to the qualified electors of the city at a special bond election to be held in said city on the 7th day of August 2018 of a proposal for the incurring of indebtedness and issuance of bonds in said city in evidence thereof in the aggregate amount of not to exceed $50 million upon the assent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors of said city voting thereon and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 241, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance pertaining to the collection of administrative citation fines assessed by the Building Commission pursuant to Ordinance 66857 on buildings or structures within the City of St. Louis which are detrimental to the health and safety and welfare of the residents of the city. Authorizing the Comptroller upon receiving certification of the administrative citation fine amounts to cause a special tax bill to be assessed to the property owner or, if the amount is unpaid for more than one year, authorizing the amounts to be added to the annual real estate tax bill containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 242, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance pertaining to the enforcement of code violations related to the building structures and premises in the City of St. Louis, particularly repealing and amending Section 11 of Ordinance 66857 and enacting in lieu thereof of a new subsection C related to the procedures for the collection of administrative citation fines in accordance with Sections 47, 9.011, and 67.451 of Revised Statute of Missouri containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 243, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and ordinance requiring the City Information Technology Services Agency to create and maintain in good functioning order a calendar on the homepage of the City of St. Louis website specifically for the purpose of publishing required notifications of city departments and divisions, public meetings, as the term is defined here, is defined in 610.010 of Revised Statute of Missouri and requiring said city departments and divisions to publish notifications of public meetings on said calendar. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills 241 and 242, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 240, to the Housing Committee, Board Bill 239, and to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 243, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill 218, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman and Alderman women Ogilvy, Ingracia, Gunther, and President Reed, and ordinance authorizing the Department of Streets to develop and promulgate rules and regulations with approval of the Board of Public Service, consistent with Chapter 17 of the Revised Code and other applicable law to facilitate the regulation of bike sharing as defined herein. That's the extent of our second reading.
We dispense with line item 14, at the request of Alderman from the 4th, please place Board Bill 203 and 126 on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 215, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Devonshire and Childress, regulating all traffic traveling westbound on Devonshire at Childress, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress at Devonshire and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 227, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of lead hazard reduction demonstration grant funds appropriating a sum of $2,100,000, which the city has been awarded for the LHRD program, authorizing and directing the Director of Community Development Administration to contract with the municipal agencies, nonprofit corporations, and other entities for the expenditure of LHRD funding and directing the Comptroller to issue warrants thereon upon the, upon the city treasury and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 224, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement and contract of sale for the sale of property between St. Louis and Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren, Missouri, providing for the sale of approximately 1.3994 acres of property for the sum of $80,000 quick claim deed to the agreement entitled Form of Quick Claim Deed for a St. Louis property and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 225, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the Restated and Amended Lease Agreement AL 223 between the City and Signature Flight Support Corporation, amending the Restated and Amended Lease Agreement AL 22232 dated June 25, 2013. The First Amendment was approved by the Airport Commission containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 226, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the Lease Agreement AL 222 between the City and MHS Travel and Charter Incorporated, amending the Lease Agreement AL 222 dated June 25, 2013, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderman and Alderman, President Reed, Davis, Bosley, Mohammed, Vacaro, Honowitz, and Hubbard, and ordinance, amending Ordinance 69429 by repealing Sections 2 and Section 3 of that ordinance, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 2 and a new Section 3 pertaining to the same subject matters and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and all the men and all the women, Spencer, Cohen, Williamson, Kotar, Davis, Gunther, and Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis. Board of Public Service of the city establishing multiple public work and improvement projects within the city.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 203.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill 203.
Been moved by the Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by the Alderman from the 6th. Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
All right, Alderman from the first.
Members of the board, I had asked for it to be taken off consent because we didn't have it on our desk, and so I wanted to make sure there was no changes. I have no opposition.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize close.
Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by the Alderman from the 6th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance adopted pursuant to Intergovernmental Agreement Act, Section 70.210 to 70.325, inclusive of the revised statute of Missouri, and authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District for the purpose of sharing certain water data in the possession of the city within the Metropolitan Sewer District for fair and substantial compensation received by the Metropolitan Sewer District, containing a severability clause and a governance clause.
All the women from the 6th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 126.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a fairly run-of-the-mill bill.
I'd like to make a motion to perfect.
I would like to make a motion to perfect Board Bill 126.
Moved by the Alderman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderman from the 22nd. All the women, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill 126 is an agreement between the Metropolitan Sewer District and the city of St. Louis. We've been undertaking a similar contract for about the past 30 years, and under the course of Kurt Scobie reviewing the processes in place at the Water Division, he determined that instead of the contract being signed and going through just E&amp;A, that it would be better served as an ordinance after consultation with the city councillor's office. There is a state statute in place that requires the city of St. Louis to pass along the information that will allow MSD to determine what the rates will be for their customers, and so that is the information that gets passed along. We will be paid $13,000 a month, and the adjustment will be pursuant to the Consumer Price Index each year, so we'll be able to increase the amount instead of having a static amount. I'm happy.
Okay. Any further discussion? All the women from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to disagree with my colleague. It's not run-of-the-mill, and we, and she is correct, we didn't have it, we've had this ongoing, we had it as an agreement versus a piece of legislation. I voted present in the committee, and the reason why I did is because we do, actually do have a state law that requires us to give information about how they can bill. The only, the information that you would be able to use as MSD of how they could bill are the people who have meters. If you have a flat rate, there is no way for them to determine what they should be billing you, because they don't, they can't determine that, because they don't have a water bill, okay? So, and I was never able to get a answer from MSD as to what they do with this information. I guess I'm old enough that I don't like Big Brother. Everybody wants cameras everywhere. Sometimes, I don't want cameras. I still believe we got some civil rights and some expectations of privacy, and I think we're losing a lot of this. We lost a lot when we had 9/11, and you know, so they start having these warrantless searches and things like that, so that concerns me sometimes. And so, they have not been able to give me an answer. This last time, we had a hearing, MSD was not there for me to find out, what, how do you determine my bill? I've been in my house for 30 years. If I'm on a flat rate, how do you make that determination? You cannot, okay? And, but, I do, Mr. Scobie introduced the price somewhat of what we were getting. I really didn't think it was enough, but I didn't have enough information to disagree with him, but I do disagree with us giving over information that is in excess of what is required by law. So, really what's required is that we give the information for meters, because that does do it. But when it's not a meter, when you're giving that information out, there's no way. And in fact, over the years, we've added water-saving devices, and so, I use less water. I was here when they actually changed the formula back in the 90s, mid 90s, of how MSD collected, collected information on what they charge you. And I went back, I actually have some of my original bills when I, and I used to pay like $25 quarterly, and now we're up to like $70 a month or something like that. And it's totally ridiculous. And when they did that, they were, we're gonna change over to meters, but the city didn't wanna take that cost of changing over to meters. They've tried to put it off on the people, our constituents, and it really is unfair, because if you're a senior citizen, and you're in a house, and you got two bathrooms, I don't care if you have five bathrooms, you use absolutely the same amount of water if you're there by yourself. And so, some of the mansions pay the same as a senior citizen, and I think we need to find, figure out a better way to charge people for water. And if that means we start paying, a little by little, putting meters in or something like that, but it's absolutely not fair the way it's set up. I didn't vote against it, I'm gonna vote present again, and that's why I did not want it to be on the consent calendar, because I do have concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All the women from the 6th, you recognize close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to address a few of the comments made by my colleague from the first, I don't disagree with some of the issues she has with the billing, but I will say that if you do a simple Google search, it is public information on how MSD determines the rates on flat rates, similarly to the way the city of St. Louis bills for flat rates. It's by room, toilet, shower, and bath, and so they have assumptions by gallon of water usage, and I think this is probably a smart conversation to have with MSD and the Water Division on how we bill in the future. So, at this point in time, I would like to be able, for the city to have the fees that MSD has agreed to pay come into our city coffers, and so I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 6th, and seconded by the Alderman from the 22nd, that we perfect Board Bill 126. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Volmer. 24, aye votes, one present.
By vote, stay in motion, all the women from the 6th, and perfected Board Bill Number 126.
That's the extent of Board Bill's for perfection.
We dispense with line items 17 and 18, and line item 19, and line item 21, second reading.
Resolution, the following resolution was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Resolution 176, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, the assessment and equalization maintenance plan prepared by the assessor is hereby approved as required by law.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on second reading, Resolution 176.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of Resolution 176.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 19th. Please proceed, Alderman.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, this is the annual resolution that the board must adopt on behalf of the assessor's office. This is their, considered their maintenance plan that they must submit to the state every year. If they do not submit the state in time, they lose about $400,000. We did have a very lively and informative conversation with the new assessor, who you know is past Alderman, Stephen Conway, and he did point out that their office is looking and will be getting very shortly, well, within the next year, year and a half, a new computer system that will allow the interfacing of various offices with their database to be able to update and to more modernize the city's ability to access data. Then this, this new system will also allow constituents within the city to be able to access the assessor's data as well, and then ultimately be able to pay some of their fees online. It was really an encouraging conversation that we've had with the assessor this past week, and the, this resolution did pass the committee with everyone's support. So, we do ask for everyone's support here at the board.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 19th, that we adopt Resolution 176. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Alderman from the 18th, can I recognize you to take us in the closed session under miscellaneous unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board goes into closed session in order to handle personnel issues.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the first. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenberg. Was that an aye? Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Volmer. 25, aye votes.
By vote, stay in motion, Alderman from the 18th. We're now in closed session. Alderman from the 23rd, Alderman from the 23rd, we have to have everyone exit the chambers who's not a member of the board or staff. STL TV, if we can suspend recording for right now, let me know when we're offline, and we'll have someone come back to you. Upstairs, are the marshals, you have people up there, and you're vacating? Okay, perfectly. Let me know when we're clear up top. Back in regular session. Announcements.
Tuesday, January the 23rd, Streets Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Also, on Tuesday, a joint legislation and public utilities meeting at 1:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. On Wednesday, we have no meetings. Thursday, Transportation and Commerce meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chamber. Oh, Transportation and Commerce meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room, excuse me. And then on Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Members of the board, we're gonna hold a legislative meeting on January 26th before the board meeting, it shouldn't take very long, at 9:00 a.m. on Board Bill 243. So normally, we don't like to do them before the board meeting, but in this case, it's a, it should be a very short hearing. So legislative meeting, January 26th, 9:00 a.m., Board Bill 243 before the board meeting. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
All the women from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce, for the first time, the 27th ward is going to sponsor a leadership training program tomorrow from 10:00 to 1:00, and we have invited leaders within our ward that are gonna be trained on how to be productive leaders and direct committees.
Oh, well, congratulations. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, do you have announcement?
I do, Mr. President. I'd like to announce a Public Safety Committee meeting for Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. I believe we'll be hearing Board Bills 212, 216, and 97 committee substitute.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 3rd, 5th...
Please state your point of order.
Announcement, we didn't do a moment of silence for Frankie Muse Freeman.
No, we did.
We did it already?
Yes, yes.
I wasn't here?
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 3rd, 5th, and 10th be excused for necessary absence.
Been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I board, I move that the board adjourns till Friday, January 26th, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.